Just pray. Thank you, our dear heavenly Father, for giving us your word, which is powerful to direct and guide us in our journey through life. Thank you for all the treasures that are hidden within the pages of the Bible. We ask that you will give us wisdom and understanding as we dig into your words tonight. Use me as a vessel to disseminate your word, enlighten our hearts and inspire us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Genesis, chapters nineteen and twenty. The destruction of Sodom and Gomorrah, Abraham and Abimelech. Chapter eighteen ended with Abraham interceding for Sodom. Because according to the Lord, there had been an outcry against Sodom and Gomorrah due to their outrageous sins and wickedness. God does not overlook or tolerate sin. Yes, he is merciful and long-suffering. He sees every evil and immoral acts that people commit, but he is not willing that any should perish or that all should come to repentance, according to 2 Peter three nine. But we should not take his patience and compassion for granted because there comes a time when God judges. Here, we read how he judged Sodom for its wickedness. We're going to read chapter nineteen, verses one to fourteen. Now the two angels came to Sodom in the evening, and Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom. When Lot saw them, he rose to meet them, and he bowed himself with his face toward the ground. And he said, "Here now, my lords, please turn in to your servants' house and spend the night and wash your feet, that you may rise early and go on your way." And they said, "No, but we will spend the night in the open square." But he insisted strongly. So they turned in to him and entered his house. Then he made them a feast and baked on leavened bread, and they ate. Now before they lay down, the men of the city, the men of Sodom, both old and young, all the people from every quarter surrounded the house. And they called to Lot and said to him, "Where are the men who came to you tonight? Bring them out to us, that we may know them kindly." So Lot went out to them through the doorway, shut the door behind him, and said, "Please, my brethren, do not do so wickedly. See now, I have two daughters who have not known a man. Please, let me bring them out to you, and you may do to them as you wish. Only do nothing to these men, since this is the reason they have come under the shadow of my roof." And they said, "Stand back." Then they said, "This one came in to stay here and keeps acting as a judge. Now we will deal worse with you than with them." So they pressed hard against the man Lot and came near to break down the door. But the men reached out their hands and pulled Lot into the house with them and shut the door. And they struck the men who were at the doorway of the house with blindness, both small and great, so that they became weary trying to find the door. Then the men said to Lot, "Have you anyone else here? Son-in-law? Your sons, your daughters, and whoever you have in the city? Excuse me. Take them out of this place, for we will destroy this place because the outcry against them has grown great before the face of the Lord. And the Lord has sent us to destroy it." So Lot went out and spoke to his sons-in-law, who had married his daughters, and said, "Get up! Get out of this place, for the Lord will destroy this city." But to his sons-in-law, he seemed to be joking. Excuse me. In verse one, we see that the two angels, who had visited Abraham with the Lord, were now in Sodom. They found Lot sitting at the city gate. Only those who were powerful and influential sat at the gate. So Lot was now, no doubt, a prominent figure in Sodom. Possibly, I judge. How did he get to this place? It all started from Genesis thirteen ten, when he had to separate himself from Abraham. The Bible says Lot chose for himself all the plain of Jordan and pitched his tent as well as Sodom. And even though Genesis thirteen thirteen says, "But the men of Sodom were exceedingly wicked and simple against the Lord", and 2 Peter two seven says "That righteous Lot was depressed by the filthy conduct of the wicked and upset at their lawless actions." By the time we get to Genesis fourteen twelve, we see that Lot was already living inside Sodom. Now, in this chapter, we see that he was not only living in Sodom, but was in fact holding a position of leadership in the city, and he was no longer living in tents, but in a house. Lot was a half-hearted believer. He was willing to tolerate Sodom's wickedness so that he could enjoy its social and material benefits. When Lot saw the angels, he bowed down humbly before them and invited them to enter into his house. At first, the angels rejected his offer, saying they would prefer to spend the night in the open square. But Lot insisted, and so they entered into the house. Like his uncle Abraham, Lot prepared a feast for them, and they ate. Before the men lay down, the men of the city of Sodom, young and old, a mob of wicked men surrounded the house and demanded that Lot should bring out the two visitors so that they could know them kindly, that is, have sex with them. The men of Sodom were notorious for their lifestyle of sexual immorality, especially for their practice of homosexual acts and lusts. "Do not do so wickedly," Lot pleaded with them, while the mob was bent on sexually assaulting the visitors. And Lot, in order to protect them, made a terrible and sinful offer of his virgin daughters to the angry mob. What's Lot in his twice senses? Did he even think of the harm that this offer could have inflicted on the daughters and his family as a whole? Excuse me. But even though Lot called them brothers, he was powerless to influence or deter the crowd. They had no respect for him, calling him a foreigner who kept on acting as a judge and were almost about to break the door. But the men, that is, the two angels, pulled Lot inside the house and struck the man, the men, with blindness. In verses twelve to fourteen, the angels warned Lot to get his family out of Sodom because the city will soon be destroyed because of its wickedness. So Lot went out to warn his sons-in-law, but they didn't take him serious. They thought he was joking. And let's read the rest. Uh, no, verses fifteen to twenty-nine. Fifteen to twenty-nine. "When the morning dawned, the angels urged Lot to do havoc, saying, 'Arrive, take your wife and your daughters, who are here, lest you be consumed in the punishment of the city.' And while he lingered, the men took hold of his hand, his wife's hands, and the hands of his two daughters. The Lord be merciful to him, and they brought him out and set him outside the city. So it came to pass, when they had brought them outside, that he said, 'Escape for your life. Do not look behind you, nor stay anywhere in the plain. Escape to the mountains, lest you be destroyed.' Then Lot said to them, 'Please, know, my lords, indeed now your servant has found favor in your sight, and you have increased your mercy, which you have shown me by saving my life. But I cannot escape to the mountains, lest some evil overtake me and I die. See now, the city is near enough to flee to, and it is a little one. Please, let me escape there. Is it not a little one, and my soul shall live? And he said to them, "See, I have found favor. I have favored you concerning this thing also, in that I will not overthrow the city for which you have spoken. Hurry, escape there, for I cannot do anything until you arrive there.'" Therefore, the name of the city was called Zohar. The sun had risen upon the earth when Lot entered Zohar. Then the Lord rained rainstorm and fire on Sodom and Gomorrah from the Lord out of the heavens. So he overthrew those cities, all the plain, all the inhabitants of the cities, and what grew on the ground. But his wife looked behind him, and she became a pillar of salt. And Abraham went early in the morning to the place where he had stood before the Lord. Then he looked towards Sodom and Gomorrah, and towards all the land of the plain, and he saw, and behold, the smoke of the land, which went up like the smoke of a furnace. And it came to pass, when God destroyed the cities of the plain, that God remembered Abraham and sent Lot out of the midst of the overthrow, when he overthrew the cities in which Lot had dwelt. The following morning, the angels told Lot to hurry up with his wife and daughters and get out of the city, but he lingered. The angels had to hold his hands and drag him and his family out of the city. Here we find a demonstration of God's mercy in the midst of judgment. God could have destroyed Sodom without letting Abraham or Lot know. But because of God's mercy, the angels forcefully brought Lot and his family to safety. Indeed, it is true that the Lord redeems the souls of his servants, and none of those who trust in him shall be condemned. The instructions of the angels were quite clear. "Escape for your life. Do not look behind you. Nor stay anywhere in the plain. Escape to the mountains, lest you be destroyed." Even then, Lot still bargained with the angels. He did not want to go to the mountains, but to a city nearby, the city of Zohar. He had become so accustomed to city life. The angels mercifully granted his request and allowed him and his daughters to get to Zohar before Sodom was destroyed. The Lord rained rainstorm and fire on Sodom and Gomorrah and overthrew the cities. But Lot's wife disobeyed and looked back and became a pillar of salt. She was reluctant to leave Sodom. She looked longingly at the city she was leaving behind. Her heart was in Sodom, so she perished. In Luke chapter seventeen, verse thirty-two, Luke seventeen thirty-two, Jesus in his teaching on the study and destruction that will come in the last days warned. Remember Lot's wife. Lot's wife represents those who are attached to earthly things, those whose hearts are still in the world. Such people will perish. Believers must not look back at the world. God saved Lot for Abraham's sake. There were not even ten righteous people in Sodom, after all. Let's read the rest of chapter nineteen, verses thirty to thirty-eight. "Then Lot went up out of Zohar and dwelt in the mountains, and his two daughters were with him. And he was afraid to dwell in Zohar, and he and his daughters dwelt in a cave. Now the firstborn said to the younger, "Our father is old, and there is no man on earth to come in to us as the custom of all the earth. Come, let us make our father drink wine, and we will lie with him, that we may preserve the lineage of our father." So they made their father drink wine that night, and the firstborn went in and lived with her father. And he did not know when she lay down or when she arose. It happened on the next day. Now the firstborn said to the younger, "Indeed, I lay with my father last night. Let us make him drink wine today, tonight also, and you go in and lie with him, that we may preserve the lineage of our father." Then they made their father drink wine that night also, and the younger arose and lived with him. And he did not know whether she lay down, when she lay down, and when she arose. Thus, both the daughters of Lot were with child by their father. The firstborn bore a son and called his name Moab. He is the father of the Moabites to this day. And the younger, she also bore a son and called his name Ben-Amin. He is the father of the people of Ammon to this day. Earlier in this chapter, when the angels asked Lot to escape to the mountains, he pleaded with them that they would let him go to the small city of Zohar, and they granted his request. But here, we find him and his daughters living in a cave in the mountains. He must have discovered that the city of Zohar was not as safe as he thought it would be. He did not feel safe in the city. Here, Lot's daughters committed the sin of incest with their father. Desperate to preserve the family line of their father, they conspired to make him drunk and have sexual relations with them. Even though their desperation was real, for their husbands had died and they were not likely to remarry, nevertheless, their action could not be justified. In verses thirty-three and thirty-five, verses thirty-three and thirty-five, we have repeated the statement, "And he, that is Lot, did not know when she lay down and when she arose." This is an attempt to show that Lot was not of the plan to commit the sin of incest. It was not a deliberate sin on his part, but it can be said that he was not only reaping what he sowed, but it can be said that he was only reaping what he sowed. After separating from Abraham, Lot chose to live in Sodom, depraved as the city was. He tolerated sin and reaped the consequences of sin. The depraved standards of Sodom corrupted his daughters and their choices. Their sin of incest with their father led to the birth of two sons, Moab, who is the father of the Moabites, and Ben-Amin, who is the father of the Ammonites. The Moabites and the Ammonites, who later be numbered among the enemies of Israel. Because of their hostility to Israel, they were not allowed to participate in the worship of the Lord. Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-three, verse three. Deuteronomy twenty-three, verse three says, "An Ammonite or Imhotep shall not enter the assembly of the Lord. Even to the tenth generation, none of his descendants shall enter the assembly of the Lord forever." Yet, because of the grace of God, Ruth, a Moabite, became one of God's people by faith, and her name appears in the genealogy of Jesus Christ. And I'm quoting from Matthew one five. "Boas begat Obed by Ruth, the Moabite; Obed begat Jesse; and Jesse begat David, the king; and from David's line came our Lord Jesus Christ." Let's now go to chapter twenty. Genesis, chapter twenty. The story here is that of Abraham and Abimelech. I'm going to read the entire chapter. And Abraham journeyed from there to the south and dwelt between Kadesh and Shur and stayed in Gerah. Now Abraham said of Sarah, his wife, "She is my sister." And Abimelech, king of Gerah, sent and took Sarah. But God came to Abimelech in a dream by night and said to him, "Indeed, you are a dead man because of the woman whom you have taken, for she is a man's wife." But Abimelech had not come near her, and he said, "Lord, we use thee a righteous nation also. Did ye not say to me, 'She is my sister?'" And she, even she herself said, "He is my brother. In the integrity of my heart and in innocence of my hands, I have done this." And God said to him in a dream, "Yes, I know that you did this in the integrity of your heart, for I also withheld you from sinning against me. Therefore, I did not let you touch her." Excuse me. Now, excuse me. Now therefore, restore the man's wife, for he is a prophet. And if we pray for you, then you shall live. But if you do not restore her, know that you shall surely die and all who are yours." So Abimelech rose early in the morning, called all the servants, and told all these things in their hearing, and the men were very much afraid. And Abimelech called Abraham and said to him, "What have you done to us? How have I offended you, that you have brought on me and all my kingdom a great sin? You have done this to me that ought not to be done." Then Abimelech said to Abraham, "What did you have in view that you have done this thing?" And Abraham said, "Because I thought surely the fear of God is not in this place, and they will kill me on account of my wife. But indeed, she is truly my sister. She is the daughter of my father, but not the daughter of my mother, and she became my wife. And it came to pass, when God caused me to wander from my father's house, that I said to her, 'This is your kindness that you should do to me. In every place wherever we go, see of me, he is my brother.'" Then Abimelech took sheep, oxen, and male and female servants, and gave them to Abraham, and he restored Sarah his wife to him. And Abimelech said, "See, my land is before you. Dwell where it pleases you." Then to Sarah, he said, "Behold, I have given your brother a thousand pieces of silver. Indeed, this vindicates you before all who are with you and before everybody." Thus he was rebuilt. So Abraham prayed to God, and God healed Abimelech, his wife, and his female servants. Then they bore children, for the Lord had closed up the wounds of the house of Abimelech because of Sarah, Abraham's wife. Genesis, chapter twenty. Abraham and Abimelech. In verse one of this chapter, we see Abraham was on the move again. Unlike his nephew Lot, who had chosen to settle down in a city, Abraham was a tent man. Hebrews eleven, verse nine, says this about him. Hebrews eleven says nine, it was nine. "By faith he dwelt in the land of promise, as in a foreign country, dwelling in tents with Isaac and Jacob, the heirs with him of the same promise." This time he was in Gerah, where Abimelech was king. Here, he was to repeat the very action he took when he went down to Egypt many years before, as recorded in Genesis twelve, ten to thirteen. He again told Sarah to lie that she was his sister in order to preserve his life. Even though God had been protecting them all along, fear gripped Abraham again. Abraham was concerned for himself, not for Sarah, not even for the child of promise that was to be born within in the year, according to God's word. Here, Abraham lied that Sarah was a sister, and so Sarah was taken into the king's harem to be his wife. Satan will use force, will use fear as a tactic to convince us that telling a lie is not a bad idea. And so many times we tell lies to avoid getting into trouble. In John, chapter eight, verse forty-four, John eight forty-four, we are told that Satan is the father of lies. He tries to make us forget the promises of God. But God is merciful. God showed mercy to Abimelech, warning him that he was as good as dead because he had taken to himself the wife of another man. He also showed mercy to Abraham and Sarah, but we then but preventing Abimelech from going near Sarah. Lord, we usedly a righteous nation also, Abimelech said to the Lord. Did he not say to me, she is my sister, and she, even she herself said, he is my brother? In the integrity of my heart and the innocence of my hands have I, have done this. God said, I know, that is why I prevented you from sinning against me. I did not allow you to touch her. God commanded Abimelech, commanded Abimelech to return Sarah to her husband, and let Abraham pray for him, for he was a prophet, so that he and his household will not die. God called Abraham a prophet, really? A man who had lied twice, who had brought about all this mess. Yes, God meant what he said. That was how God, in his grace, held Abraham in spite of his failure. In Romans chapter eleven, Romans eleven twenty-nine, it says, for the gifts and the calling of God are irrevocable. They are inexhaustible, his mercy and grace are inexhaustible. So don't let the enemy deceive you. God will, can use you. Don't let the devil tell you God cannot use you because you have failed several times. That is a lie from the pit of hell. So when Abimelech called the servants in the morning and told them everything that God had told him, they were all afraid. Abimelech promptly obeyed God, he called Abraham, asked him why he did what he did. He confessed that it was out of fear, that he might be killed because of his beautiful wife Sarah. And in verse eleven, Abraham said, because I thought the fear of God was not in this place. Because I thought. How often do we think our way through situations? How often do we get into trouble because we make wrong assumptions? But even if it was true that the people in Gerah did not fear God, was that a justification for Abraham to lie? Couldn't he have consulted God about it? Instead of making wrong assumptions and taking wrong steps, we should always pray that God will show us the right steps to take. Abraham had another excuse for his lie, the half-truth that indeed Sarah was his half-sister. This was a half-truth that was intended to deceive and mislead Abimelech. As a matter of fact, both he and Sarah had planned to be telling this lie or half-truth as far back as when they were living his home country. Abimelech not only restored Sarah, but he also gave Abraham gifts, sheep, oxen, male and female servants, as well as one thousand pieces of silver. What a huge reward for lying. It will be recalled that when he committed the same sin in Egypt, he was also given generous gifts and material wealth. Why? I think God by his grace allowed these gifts in order to accomplish his purposes through Abraham. Abimelech also gave Abraham the freedom to live anywhere he chose in the land. So Abraham prayed to God for Abimelech, and God healed him and his entire household. And the women in the household could again their children, for God had closed their wombs because of Sarah. God not only protected Abraham and Sarah again in spite of Abraham's unfaithfulness, but he also extended his mercy and goodness to Abimelech and all his household. Indeed, our God is gracious and full of mercy. David in Psalm one hundred and three verses ten to eleven, Psalm one hundred and three verses ten to eleven says, he that is God has not dealt with us according to our sins, nor punished us according to our iniquities. For as the heavens are high above the earth, so great is his mercy towards all who fear him. Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for our study of tonight. Thank you for your grace and mercy that are always available for us, even though many times we fail to do the things you expect us to do. Forgive us, Father, because like Lot, we are so attracted to worldly gains and pleasures that we forget that these, there are dire consequences for bad choices. Please show us what you value most, and help us to obtain from sinful desires. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Join us next time, we shall be studying Genesis chapters twenty-one and twenty-two. Good night.